Good evening, I'd like to call the December twenty eighth meeting of the governing body to order. Madam Clerk, would you take role?
Mr. Cook?
Are you here?
I didn't, was that for me, I'm sorry, Ken was talking to me, I'm here.
Mr. Escabal?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Leiborn?
Yeah.
Dr. Rini?
Present.
Mr. Roybal?
Here.
Mr. Seagrave?
Present.
Mr. White?
Present.
Dr. Aldrich?
Present.
Mayor Collins?
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, please.
Consent agenda, all agenda items listed with the designation of C are considered to be routine items by the governing body will be enacted by one motion, there'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received, any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Thank you, is there an item or any items members of the governing body would like to remove from the consent agenda? President White?
I would like to remove item number fifteen from the consent agenda.
Concur. Okay, number fifteen has been moved to remove with two concurrences, is there any other items?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Leiborn?
I'd like to remove item number eighteen. Eighteen. Period.
Alright, there's been two concurrences, number eighteen is also removed from the consent agenda.
And I'd like to remove number twenty eight B from the consent agenda.
Twenty eight, is that B's in bacon?
Yes. Twenty eight B.
Concur.
Concur, okay, twenty eight D is removed. Anyone else? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, moved by Mr. Seagrave, seconded by President White. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved with items fifteen, eighteen, and twenty eight D removed.
Next item is number six, ordinance second reading amending the unified development code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming to create the definitions functional turf and non-functional turf and amending various sections of Article Six.
Alright, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this? Ordinance, please come forward. If you'd identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Del Scofield.
Please.
I'm in support of this ordinance change, I I realize that we're in the throes of going into a major drought and anything we can do to save water is gonna help the community and it's gonna help the rest of us. In support of that, I mean, you can read all the facts and figures that you need that are official, but I did an experiment the last couple of years myself in my own front yard. So I basically ripped out my front yard. And from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, and twenty twenty one was a hot dry year, I dropped my water consumption eighteen and a half percent. That's just for the irrigation water, for the total water use, excuse me, but that reflects it because I don't use that much water in the house. Had I not used as much to get it established, it would have even been a bigger savings, so you're just gonna see nothing but savings from this. And it's non-functional, obviously, blue grammer grass fits the definition of non-functional turf. And the neighbors all like the way it looks, it looks like a nice meadow, so it's a, it's a good thing for it's a good thing to improve and save water in the city here, and I'm just, I'm in favor of doing something like this commercially and residentially.
Sir, what did you put in your front yard?
So basically, I put, I took bluegrass out and put blue grammer grass in for the bulk of the front yard, which is an almost sod forming grass, but there's some space in between to where you can put plants in there like flowers and stuff to kind of break it up a little bit. And then in what we call the hell strip between the sidewalk and the street is all buffalo grass. And then it's got maybe plants that are growing in there, and that got very little water last year. I think the only time I watered it is when I wanted to sop in the ground a little weeds out.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience like to speak to this ordinance? Alright, hearing none, Dr. Reed?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of Public Service Committee is to approve on second reading, and I would so move. Second.
Seconded by President White. Comments for members of the governing body? Mr. Seagrave?
I wondered if I could have someone from the planning department come up, I gave them a question ahead of time. If there's anybody here.
Michael, is it Seth that's on the, on white?
We have Sam from the Planning and Development Department, Sam, can you just confirm that with the, or we have Jeannie Vetter, it looks like. Sam, can you do a raise hand if you're on Zoom?
Yes, I'm on Zoom, I'm sorry, my, my video isn't showing tonight, I don't know why.
Okay.
Mr. Seagrave?
Not planning, but this'll work, I guess.
Okay.
I'm interested in, and I gave you an example of the Maverick Station on Yellowstone and Gardenia. And the reason I chose that is twenty years ago, this governing body, not necessarily these members, but this governing body went to great lengths to establish regulations for landscaping for commercial businesses because quite frankly, our city was concrete parking from curb to curb. And there was no landscaping, so we're basically making a full loop here. And by using this Maverick, there's one on the north side, one on the south, one on the east side, I think everybody will have a visual idea of what I'm talking about here. Jeannie, can you tell me the difference between the current water usage at one of these Maverick stations? And the future water, should they build a fourth one here using the new regulations?
Mayor, through you, Jeannie Vetter, Planning and Development Office, I'm the Parks and Greenway Planner as well as a licensed landscape architect. Just for a little background, I've worked with this code for many years now as a consultant. I think it's a great change to the code. And we did do some research on the Maverick, Councilman Seagrave. I did have the Board of Public Utilities analyze the water use up at the Maverick specifically at Yellowstone and Gardenia. And they have approximately twelve thousand square foot of turf. That includes the right of way turf grass as well as the internal turf grass, it's significant. And I wanted to compare it to a site like, I'm thinking everyone might be familiar with the Panera Bread that went in a few years ago on Dill Range that has no turf grass. The Panera Bread site is actually a bit larger, it's like one point seven acres, whereas the the Maverick is one point three acres. So the difference in water use for the Maverick for the summer of twenty twenty, Maverick used seven hundred and seven thousand gallons of water for its growing season. And the Panera summer of twenty twenty used a hundred and ninety-eight thousand gallons of water. Significant difference in water usage. For twenty twenty-one Maverick used six hundred and thirty thousand gallons of water. And Panera used two hundred and eighteen thousand gallons of water. So a third or more less water usage for those two different sites with the Panera Bread site being larger. So.
Larger square footage of total land or larger square footage of landscaping?
Well, so I'm just talking about the total land. But they're both a business use and they both have the same landscape requirement based on their square footage. So they would have a fifteen percent of their site requirement for landscaping. So I think that what the, the reason I wanted to use the Panera Bread is I think it's a very good example of a very good looking landscape that has no turf grass whatsoever other than what they were. They had to put in the tree lawn based on our code. Otherwise, it's ornamental grasses, it's trees, it's shrubs, all of the rocked areas are required to have at least a seventy-five percent coverage. Our code does not allow for developers, even with the changes, we have section six point three point seven landscape material specifications that would not allow you to put a large expanse of rock without planting it to a seventy-five percent coverage, say with you know, a juniper or other shrubs or ornamental grasses. So the other thing I wanted to remind council is that this, this does not restrict developers from putting in turf grass. I think that's important to note, what it does is incentivizes not using turf grass because you just, you don't get any points for using it.
Mr. Vetter, how many business applications are approved annually that would use this formula?
You know, that might be a better question if Seth is on, I'm not sure I know the number of total site plan reviews that we do in a year. It's pretty significant. I'm sorry.
That would qualify for this regulation?
Well, I would say pretty much every site plan that we review, we review would be required to use this code.
How many commercial do we do a year? Because this will not affect residential.
Correct, I can't answer that, Councilman Seagrave, I would have to look up those numbers.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to a quantity of water here, what are we talking about, are we talking about a thousand acre feet, are we talking about a hundred thousand gallons a year, I mean, that's the number I'm trying to get to, so how many building?
Seth, do you know the answer to that, sir?
Seth is coming up.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Seth William with the City of Cheyenne Planning and Development Department. In the year twenty twenty-one, we had seventy-five site plan applications come through our office. Not all of these site plans will require full site development, some of these are for repurposing of existing sites. But we frequently utilize the site plan process to require improvements to the public right of way. Such as if that's concrete now, we require them to put in street trees and then possibly some lawn with those street trees to make the site look better. So we're talking seventy-five site plans this last calendar year. Not all of which would be full sites like the Panera, but a decent number of them are. And even the ones that aren't full site development, we are talking about requiring at least incremental improvements to the site, which likely includes improvement of landscaping.
Okay. Maybe you can help me here, let's, let's try to get to just a reasonable quantity of water we're talking about that will be affected next year by this resolution. Are we talking two million gallons of water?
Mr. Sherrod, the numbers that Ms. Vetter just gave us for two roughly equal sites, there was a reduction of four hundred thousand gallons of water from the Maverick site to the Panera site. So if we're talking about a reduction of four hundred thousand gallons of water per new site development.
Full site.
Full site development. Then we're, we're gonna be talking about in the millions of gallons of water. And that's just in one review year.
Five million?
I, I couldn't give you that kind of numbers without a little more digging, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm trying to make a point of this resolution. The amount of water we're talking about statistically compared to the amount of water that the city uses is insignificant. I'm not opposed to wise water use, I like wise water use. But I think as a council, we need to focus on the big issues. We do have representatives from D O P, you here, if anyone has questions for them, but I can give you a few, a few numbers. I don't know how many council folks realize that a significant amount of water bypasses the shared water treatment plant and fills the lakes on the west side of town. And then the irrigation is pumped out of those lakes for the golf courses, for the parks. Maybe, maybe part of the air base, I'm not sure about that. But by simply reuse, by skipping that bypass and using purple pipe to water those areas, the O P U estimates we would save. Let's see, let me get the right number here. One hundred and ninety-five million five hundred thousand gallons of water per year. That's just one significant reuse of our water in the way that we needed. Our current reservoirs at the end of a watering season are at eighty-five point nine percent. Our reservoirs with any, any runoff this year will be at capacity. We are not in a drought at this point. If we did come to the situation where we had to restrict significant water usage, I believe our residents would be the, be in line to receive water first rather than outside water use. Outside water agreements. If we eliminated all outside water agreements, we would save six hundred million gallons of water a year. Six hundred million. When the south side water correction, south side sewer line is completed and that water can be reused, that will produce an additional five hundred and sixty million gallons a year for purple pipe recycle. Five hundred and sixty million gallons a year. So while this, while this resolution is an attempt to conserve water, and I, it does conserve some water. When you look at the big picture, I believe our focus needs to be on these millions and millions and millions of gallons. That's where our city's gonna benefit in the future. Is this, is this a good thing, you know? Sure. I mean, it, yeah, is it significant? No. In the whole scope of things, it is not a significant savings. That's really the point I wanted to make tonight, thank you.
Anyone else in the governing body like to speak? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item is number seven on page two. Second reading pursuant to section two point two point two, Plan Development Regulating Plan or Development Master Plan, section five point one point three Official Zoning Maps and section five point six point two P U D Plan Unit Development District of the Unified Development Code amending ordinance number four two three two by modifying certain standards of the adopted district Plan Unit Development P U D proportion of sections eight and nine, all of the west half section fourteen, a portion of the east half, east half of section seventeen, and all sections fifteen, sixteen, and twenty-one, township thirteen north, range sixty-six west of the sixth PM, Laramie County, Wyoming, located to the southeast of the intersection of East College Drive and Avenue C.
Thank you, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing none, Dr. Rini?
Mr. Mayor, there was there was no recommendation from the Public Service Committee. However, I would move to approve on second reading with staff conditions one and two.
Second by Mr. Cook. Comments for members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Seagrave?
I hate to take up all the time tonight, but I'll try to be brief. I believe a couple of the reasons that this did not give Public Service Committee support. Basically, what they're asking us to do is as it currently sits, they're going to build twenty-five fourplexes. It will have a clubhouse and a roughly an acre of open space for these twenty-five fourplexes. What they would like to do is change that to thirty-fourplexes. But the fourplexes would have forty percent of their lot size contiguous to a greenway, they would eliminate the clubhouse and eliminate the acre of open space. First of all, I can't imagine twenty-five fourplexes in a small group like that. I can't believe we've already approved that to put thirty there without significant open space. I believe that's why it died in committee and I cannot support this, thank you.
Anyone else in the governing body like to speak?
Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Rini?
I think the councilman from Word Two is correct, they did want to put in thirty, a hundred and twenty units total. One of the staff recommendations that are in here limits those to one hundred units. So I think that, and I think that the applicant was amenable to that, I had some discussion with their representative afterwards because we are concerned about quality development. And I was hoping he would have addressed that during the public comment, but they do have, but Sweetgrass does have its own design review committee and they do look at things and they do tend to tend to kind of, I think, have the same thoughts we do as far as quality development, so I'm gonna go ahead and support it on second reading and perhaps their agent can maybe email us in the next couple of weeks as to, you know, what some of their requirements are within their P U D, and I think then maybe we'd feel more comfortable about it.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, I happened to speak with, with Mr. Pullman yesterday regarding this, this project and I, I was able to get my questions answered. And I, I felt comfortable with the explanation that he was able to provide, I, I do realize though that this is on, on second reading, hopefully he will have the opportunity to continue to provide some information to the rest of council. I will support it tonight on, on second reading, like I said, I, after speaking with him yesterday, he was able to answer my questions and I, I feel comfortable moving forward tonight.
Alright, anyone else? Alright. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ordinance is approved on second reading with Mr. Seagrave voting no.
Ordinance second reading amending ordinance number forty-three ninety-six defining the terms and conditions of employment for sworn officers of the Cheyenne Police Department for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Alright, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this ordinance on second reading? Hearing none, Mr. Roybal?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Johnson, comments for members of the governing body? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Ordinance first reading amending chapter ten point seven six Abandoned Vehicles of Title Ten, Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Will refer this to the Finance Committee?
Ordinance first reading amending chapter eight point sixty, nuisances of Title Eight, Health and Safety of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Will also refer this to the Finance Committee?
Ordinance first reading amending chapter six point zero eight point two zero zero, Keeping Abies of Chapter six point zero eight, Animal Care and Control Regulations Generally of Title Six, Animals of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Mr. Roybal, you're gonna be busy, this one also goes to the Finance Committee.
Next item is number
Nope, not next meeting, get one more before the change of command.
Next item is number thirteen on page three. Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign a final plat for Carnegie Home Sites, third filing, replotted lots eight through twelve inclusive an eight-foot alley directly north and adjacent to lots eight through twelve inclusive Carnegie Home Sites lying within the north quarter of section nineteen, township fourteen north, range sixty-six west of the sixth PM, city of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming, located northeast of the intersection of Quincy Road and Yellowstone Road.
Alright, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this final plat? Alright, hearing none, Dr. Rini?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to adopt and I would so move.
Second.
Seconded by President White.
Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Rini?
There, I would like to make a motion to amend by substitute map which is dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. We'll go back to the audience, I think the only thing that's different on this map, if I remember correctly, is the owner's block changed. And so because our property had changed hands, we needed to have a new map to do that, but if there's anyone here who would like to speak to that, we're ready for that. Alright, hearing none, how about from the governing body? Hearing that we're on the amendment for the map, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The substitute map is approved and we're back on the main motion. Comments for members of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The final plat is adopted as amended.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign a final plat for Whitney Ranch, fifth filing, replotted lot fourteen, lot nine, Whitney Ranch, first filing situated in a portion of section twenty-three, township fourteen north, range sixty-six west of the sixth PM, city of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming, located northwest of the intersection of Delrayne Boulevard and Geisoff.
Alright, anyone in the audience like to speak to this final plat? Alright, hearing none, Dr. Rini?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to adopt and I would so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave?
Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Rini?
There's also a substitute map related to this plat, map is dated December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. So I would move to amend by substitute map dated December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave?
Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this substitute? Hearing none, how about from the governing body? Alright, we'll vote on the substitute, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The substitute is approved and we're back on the main motion. Comments for members of the governing bodies? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The final plat is adopted as amended.
Resolution designating local banks as depositories for municipal funds.
Before we get started Before we get started on this, I need to declare a conflict of interest. My wife and I own stock in two of the banks that are on this list, so I'm going to declare a conflict and turn it over to President White.
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Is there comments from the public on this resolution? Comments? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mr. President.
Yes.
The recommendation of the finance committee is to adopt and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Royble, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. I'll relinquish my duties back over to Mayor Collins.
Next item is number eighteen, resolution authorizing a salary increase of one dollar and fifty cents per hour to eligible employees of the City of Cheyenne.
All right, back to the audience on this one. Is there anyone like to speak to this resolution? Mr. White.
Mr. Chair, members of the, sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the governing bodies of the city of Cheyenne. My name is Seth Floyd. I am an employee here in the city of Cheyenne. And I am also representing the Cheyenne Public Employees Association. The Cheyenne Public Employees Association is very much in favor of this resolution. We feel like it might be a little bit better to include everybody and not have an exception for those who already received an increase. So we understand the reasonings behind that, why that language is included. However, once again, we're in full support of this resolution and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. And what else in the audience like to speak to the resolution? Hearing none. Mr. Royble, if you have a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to adopt and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by President White. Comments from members of the governing body? Mr. Royble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe the treasurer could explain how we came to the conclusion that this was affordable. And am I correct in my understanding that this will immediately take effect in this year's budget?
Mr. Mayor, through you, to Councilman Layborn. So it will be in effect this fiscal year.
It'll go, it'll be six months of the fiscal year. The employees will get the increase. As far as affordable, our revenues are much higher than what we had budgeted. Whereas where I think I responded to Councilman Ray this afternoon, about two point three million dollars over are in our revenues mainly because of sales tax and billing permits revenues. Our reserves are much, much higher than they were a year ago. I think they were, I believe, about a hundred and eleven days, a hundred and nineteen days a year ago, and now they're a hundred and seventy-six days. So I feel, you know, as the economy is progressing in the city of Cheyenne and we see good things, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, obviously, but I feel good about the way things are going.
And so I believe that this does not address the longevity pay in this particular resolution. Is that right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you. Yes, that's correct. Those are two separate. There was a resolution that addressed that for regular employees and the ordinance for the police officers.
So might we expect some effort to bring back that previous longevity pay?
Mr. Mayor, through you, there is a resolution that was just approved that did that.
Oh.
And then also with the.
Darn, I didn't read it close enough.
We're ahead of the game here. And there was an ordinance that'll be approved on third and final reading, next council meeting.
So I just want to comment that this is really a good step for us with our employees and it certainly shows that we're doing our utmost to provide a salary that is an affordable salary in Cheyenne and it really is a step in the right direction. So I'm very glad that we are taking this action tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Layborn, if I could to, I'd follow up. It is a raise and the philosophy that the treasurer and I share is that if we're going to do ongoing expenses, they need to come from ongoing revenues. And it is our feeling at this time that ongoing revenues are strong and we believe that this this budget year can handle it. But also looking forward, again, as she said, we don't have a crystal ball, but we believe our our revenues are growing on an annual basis and we'll be able to handle this. And so that was part of the the concept for being able to do it rather than doing it as a one-time, like a bonus situation that we did in the past. And then we did it as a dollar fifty rather than as a percentage because the thought was the the dollar amount helps the people on the lower end of our pay scale more than it does the people on the higher end. And the lower end is where the the stress is with the inflationary costs we we uncovered. So we thought it was would help the lower end of our payroll scale. And so that was the reason it came as a dollar amount and not a percentage amount. But we feel comfortable with all the information we have today that our ongoing revenues will be able to. Is there anyone else in the governing body like to speak? Mr. Royble?
Just to outline it, for my council partner in Ward one, number eight is the ordinance restoring the longevity pay to the police. Because we have to do everything with the ordinance with the police on pay, that's why it's going to take three meetings. And then number seventeen on the consent agenda was the was the restoration of longevity pay for eligible employees. So there it's back.
All right, anyone else? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution is adopted.
Next item is number twenty-two on page four. Resolution proposing the City of Cheyenne to become the climate wellness capital of the world by working with Carbon Asset Network for the benefit of soil health and soil organic carbon capture.
All right. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this? Mr. Steenburgen?
Dale Steenburgen, President of the Greater Cheyenne Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Mayor, do you have a letter of support here from Jim McGagnon from the Stock Growers? And he was unable to attend tonight, but he asked if I'd bring this to you.
Are you going to read it into the record for us?
I can.
Why don't you? Why don't you that way? The folks who are.
Well, I will start with that and from Jim McGagnon at the Wyoming Stock Growers Association. He's the executive vice president of the organization. Wyoming Stock Growers Association recognizes the significant opportunity for agriculture landowners to manage their lands with focus on soil health. This emphasis serves to enhance carbon storage while simultaneously enhancing crop and forage forage production. This dual focus creates the opportunity for significant economic benefits from both agriculture production and the marketing of carbon credits. Wyoming Stock Growers Association has developed a close working relationship with Carbon Asset Network and fully endorses their efforts to implement a scientifically proven technology for soil testing and carbon measurement. Our statewide membership has demonstrated a strong interest in considering participation in this opportunity. Wyoming Stock Growers Association commends the City of Cheyenne for your interest in becoming a pioneer engaging with carbon asset network. Jim McGagnon, Wyoming Stock Growers.
Thank you.
So I tried to look for another time that the Wyoming Stock Growers and the community, business community in Cheyenne partnered together to push initiatives. And while I might have missed one, I think the last opportunity was a hundred and some years ago. And there were a lot of naysayers when we did it. You know what it was? The Cheyenne Frontier Days. Everybody said it would fail. Nobody knew how to do it. But at that time, the Cheyenne Industrial Club, which is the Chamber of Commerce and the Wyoming Stock Growers, who are a founding member of the Chamber of Commerce, and decided that they take a chance to bring something good to this community. Tonight, I think you have something just as revolutionary sitting in front of me. I personally have worked in a, in a carbon credits and how to catch carbon in ag. As many of you know, I'm a farm kid for at least twenty years. And we have struggled and we have struggled and nobody has come up with the function of how to do it. In the day's climate, companies all over this country are looking for ways to increase their corporate governance and show that they are good stewards and that they are dealing with carbon. I think you guys all know that, right? You hear it from the governor every single day. At the same time, blockchain technology is an is a growing booming business for the state of Wyoming. And this is so neat because it brings these two things together and gives us an opportunity as the City of Cheyenne to be a leader in carbon capture, in climate wellness, and advancing something that both business and governments need. Additionally, without any investment from you upfront, we are offering the chance for you to to make a few bucks as we go along. Right? Now I get it that there are, this is a hard problem. Right? If it wasn't, if it was easy, somebody would have done it a long time ago, but it's not. It's hard. Are there some unanswered questions? Yes. Well, what we need is a path forward. And we believe that this resolution gives us that path forward. Certainly down the line, there's going to have to be some kind of agreement that comes back to you. We understand that, but we need a body to work with. Marvin wouldn't say it. None of the rest of these guys would say it, but I will tell you this. If you guys don't do this, somebody else somewhere else will. Right? Because there this is the I can't guarantee you that it will work, but I can guarantee you that has a good opportunity work with the partners behind it. And whoever figures it out is definitely going to see some big benefits. And with that, I know that Marvin is here from the Carbon Asset Network. He can answer a lot of questions for you and I would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Seagrave. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Steenburgen. Some of my colleagues are concerned with the certification by the city. Can you, can you talk to that issue for us? What is the certification portion?
Yeah, so I I would tell you, don't get hung up on the word certification. We're not asking you to go out and dig in the dirt. We're not asking you to hire somebody to go out and dig in the dirt. And what what we are asking you to do, I think about it like a license, right? So if somebody comes to you and wants to do business in Cheyenne, they generally prove that they can do this, but you don't, you don't certify that. And they're going to do a good job of whatever that you've licensed them to do. You don't certify that they'll never break the law or take liability for that. What you say is this person has filled out the appropriate paperwork to do this job in our community. That's what we're asking for the city to do, right? We're using blockchain technology. So PhDs in soil science, guys with master's degrees in soil science are going to certify that this this carbon capture attempt was was done. And what the city does and what we need is a governing body to say, look, we can see in this record, these guys say it happened. We believe that it happened. Right? That that's what we're looking for. And that's there would be a long drawn out political discussion, but that's what's happening in this country that we need a political body to say, hey, Microsoft, your efforts are recognized. And so that's really what we're asking you to do is to say, yep, we, from a governing body standpoint, we're going to say we recognize that this happened.
Any other questions for our chamber director?
Mr. Royble. You alluded to a few minutes ago that this is basically this resolution is kind of a raw, we're getting on the bus with you. When it comes down to things like the two percent, the certification, things like that, are we going to have a whole agreement on that?
I would think that you would have to, as to outline some of exactly how this happens going going along, right?
Yes.
And what we are telling you through this resolution is that, and these guys, they are willing to do, right? And in so that I would assume that at some point, there got to be, there has to be a, some kind of contractual agreement. And I don't know all the exact words for government body to do that, but there's going to have to be some kind of setup which details details that much, much more than a resolution would be my guess.
Okay, thank you.
An expectation.
So Dale, what you're asking for is just as a first step to say, yes, we're willing to go on the ride and we'll work through the details as it goes forward.
Yeah, as we start working through some of this blockchain technology, we start lining up these professionals and and this, and we've got several of them, but fitting all them together. We need to know that at the end of the day that we have a partner that is committed in making this happen. Right? So I think that's why that this resolution is important, important to us.
Mr. Mayor.
President White.
Mr. Steenburgen, looking through the resolution and I had a chance to speak with the sponsor of the resolution earlier. But it seems like it's a no risk no risk situation for the city. So you're not asking for the city to provide any type of funding on this or or anything like that?
Nope, no funding. I mean, at some point, we get, there will be a little bit of word from mayor's office wherever would do this to come up with this agreement, but what we are asking for is just for you to work with us to build that framework so that we can move forward.
Mr. Mayor, and in return for the resolution, the city is to receive two percent of of what is made by the network?
That is correct. See, from the donations that are are given to this end, which, so what what happened?
So that's two percent of the seventy percent that goes.
That's probably a question for Marvin, two percent of the. Marvin can come answer that question. I don't, I don't want to misspeak. I think I know the answer, but.
Mr. Nash.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes.
Could you identify yourself for the record just?
I'm Marvin Nash. I'm the, I think I'm the senior advisor of the Carbon Asset Network. My wife tells me what I am and what I'm not, but but anyway, John Robitaille from Casper, who I think is only our CEO. Y'all may know the Robitaille name. He's been in Wyoming for a long time, well represents us. But yes, it would be two percent of the seven. No, it would be two percent of what we do. It's two percent of what Carbon Asset Network does.
This, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. White will let me call up, please. So that was my, that was one of my questions is two percent of your gross.
Correct.
Gross donations.
Correct.
Two percent of the net.
Two percent of the the net of the donations.
Okay, so there's twenty-five percent is going to be administrative at cost.
Correct.
So if we take, if we take the gross, twenty-five percent is administrative, seventy percent is paid out to the
Participant.
Landowners.
Correct.
Of the other five, remaining five percent, the city gets two percent of that. Is that correct?
No, 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 no. You get, you get two percent of the total donation after the seventy percent comes up.
Okay, so we're get two percent of thirty percent?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Correct. And and Mr. America, I, I know everybody's wondering about the funding. Okay, and and we're plowing the ground here. But because of blockchain, there's been a creation of NFTs or tokenization. Carbon assets are neither a mineral or a credit. And they are obtained and controlled by the surface owner. So we're going to see a revolutionary approach of surface owners creating tokenization. And then the assets will be traded on a token or a voluntary process. So we created two parallel pathways to generate income. The seventy percent number came from our governor. Wyoming's a really cool state. You can have a conversation with the governor at the Stock Growers meeting between conferences. And he said, I sold carbon credits many years ago. And he gave me the amount that he sold. And he said, when I got my check, fifty percent of that went to a middleman. Just, they didn't do anything and they got fifty percent of it. That's been the challenge with the expansion of climate wellness. So I told the governor, I said, let me figure out how to do this where the landowner and the surface owner is the recipient of the maximum volume of income. If I grow alfalfa, I grow cows, I grow grass, I grow anything, it's a cash crop. Carbon Asset Network has been able to identify how to make. Carbon Asset Network has been able to identify how to make carbon assets a cash crop. Whether it's a city municipality land, whether it's a landowner on the corner, we have figured out how to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
President White.
I have more questions, but I'll yield and share back to you since you had it first.
Have you approached, sir, have you approached any other city governing bodies or counties?
We have not.
With this offer?
We, we, we have not approached anybody else. Uh, we were working with the stock growers. We felt like that the city of Cheyenne, because of its, probably because of its frontier days and the things that Dale brought up about doing something 100 years ago, we felt like Cheyenne was an appropriate place to try it, and we lived here. And, and we just felt like, you know, there's not really anything to lose on the city's behalf. You know, you want the Microsofts, you want the greenhouse status, you want all these people. And when cities go to competing for those things, they all run around saying, give us, give us, give us, give us, give us sewer, give us land, give us buildings, give us, give us, give it. But one of the number one topics among all industries today is ESG, environmental social governance. After tonight, or when this resolution gets passed, if it does, which we hope it does, the city will be able to say to an incoming industry, and by the way, instead of just checking a box of ESG, we have a partnership with a rancher 10 miles from us that has acreage that we can help provide you climate wellness tokens or assets. And so that's, that's the big picture. But no, we have not approached any other cities. Uh, we, we do have two cities that have, we've told them, you're second in line. We'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Dr. Rinn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So going back to the funding, then if the two cities getting 2% of the 30% of administrative costs, then the city shares actually 0.6%. Um, just to clear that up, in, in, in watching your PowerPoint that you gave to us last month, it did say that the city will provide certification of your protocol. And yet, I don't know that we've ever seen the protocols, so will that be?
The, and that would, that would be in the contractual or, or the development. But basically, all the protocol is, all the city would do is say that Carbon Asset Network took soil samples, they sent them to Ward Lab, let's just use Ward Laboratories in Nebraska. They sent them to Ward Laboratories or to CSU or to wherever. We can't send them to university. They don't have enough equipment right now to do certification. Uh, but we're trying to help them with that. But went to wherever that lab was, the city would just acknowledge that that sample went to that laboratory. The reason we know how to do this is because we did this with water. That sample does not come back to Carbon Asset Network. That sample goes on the blockchain. Once it's placed into the blockchain, then it can't be contaminated. Back to the question of certification, that's one of the big challenges. How do we know a farmer or rancher doesn't change the numbers? How don't we know that he doesn't go get a soil sample from here or there? By using certified agronomics to do the soil sample. By having, in, in our case with water, we used a Western R and D, Lou Harmon and him. And Lou Harmon, I'm sure y'all are familiar with, he helped us develop a non-contaminatory process to do with water. We just moved that over to soil is all we did. That soil cannot be contaminated by a third party because that data goes straight from the laboratory, straight to the blockchain. And to your point, it's a great point. That has always been one of the challenges. We just figured out how to do it.
Mr. Mayor, another question.
Mayor had a breakdown.
Had a blowout.
Just hold your breath.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, one of the other slides in the PowerPoint said that after verification, the city will issue a token to the donor. Are we actually issuing tokens and how do you envision that working?
Right, it, at the, at the time, in, in that development of that PowerPoint, we were in the development of the tokenization process. The city does not have to issue the token, Carbon Asset Network can issue the token. But there will be a, there, there is the potential for a token to be issued. Now, I need to be really clear. There are two pathways. There are two parallel pathways. One of them is tokenization. The other pathway is donations. But they both involve income. If, I have a, gotta be careful because I got some NDAs and I don't want to violate any of my NDAs. I have a landowner that has land in Laramie County. He is going to tokenize his acreage. He will do that with a smart contract. And all of these words I'm throwing out here, those are what y'all have been talking about in this city for years. Develop it, develop it, develop. I just listened to what y'all were saying and I said, I can put this to application. He's going to tokenize his acreage. Each one of those acres will then do a soil test, identify the soil organic carbon, and then they will issue another token for the value of that soil organic carbon, and someone can compete to own that carbon asset. And, and I don't want to get into a bookkeeping, you know, conversation, but basically all I'm doing is what y'all have been talking about. That's all I'm doing.
I understand that, but I'm, again, going back to your slide, it said that the city would issue tokens, so.
Now, that, that should be corrected, and that Carbon Asset Network will issue the token. Uh, the only thing that the city currently would do is they would acknowledge via a certificate, a, a letter or whatever, they would acknowledge that we took the soil samples to the certified lab.
Okay.
That's it.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Nash, do you have any kind of pro forma or any, like, anything that shows what you anticipate in your first year, third year, fifth year, anon, anything like that?
I, I can't re, I, I do, I can't reveal that because I'm an NDA with the, with the intellectual property developer. And, and so that, uh, that, that's, uh, that's confidential information at this time. I think once the resolution is completed, then that would put us in a, a place where we could talk about those numbers and provide that pro forma, uh, once we move to a contractual or advance that part of the conversation.
And my last question, Mr. Mayor, is, at least at this point, do you have, can you give us an idea of what, what you took in in donations in 2021?
We, we, we took in a little over $40,000 the first three months, and then we stopped. Because you really can't compete for donations with puppy dogs and Christmas holidays and St. Jude and all those other kind of things. At the time, we had moved forward with the token concept when it came about. And so we made an internal decision to stop the fundraising. This opportunity had come about, and we wanted to see what happened with that. And so after the first of the year, then we're going to, uh, reapproach our donations and those kind of things.
Okay, and, and Mr. Steenburgh, you're going to tell, I'd asked him this earlier, but I want to confirm that the Carbon Asset Network is a 501(c)(3) corporation?
The synergy for ecological solutions is a 501(c)(3).
Okay.
There had to be a pathway to take in the donations.
Right. Okay, and then, all right. I can dig that slide out of your presentation. I remember seeing it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Nash? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Is there anyone else in the audience like to speak? Is there anybody online? Okay. I'm hearing none. Mr. Royble, the other motion.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation the Finance Committee is to adopt, and I saw moved.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave, opportunity for members of the governing body to speak.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rinn.
Sorry, Richard. Um, I guess I want to get out ahead of this a little bit. But I do have some reservations. I've listened to their presentation four times now. Um, I just think there's some open ends or just that I'm not completely comfortable with. So I would like to make an amendment, channeling my inner Shaner here, he used to do this all the time.
Please move on, Dick.
Yeah, anyway, I would like to make an amendment, and the amendment is that we delete the paragraph on page two, that now therefore be a resolved. And sorry, Kylie, this is it. Um, and I would like to substitute now therefore be a resolved by the governing body of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, that the governing body authorizes and encourages the mayor and his administration to work with the Carbon Asset Network to develop a program in which the city will verify that the Carbon Asset Network's soil, and then it kind of picks up with, you know, soil organic carbon and soil health protocol for receipt of 2% of donations made to the Carbon Asset Network. And furthermore, and this is new, in addition to what we had there, any agreements, MOUs, or contracts developed by the administration and on behalf of the city of Cheyenne will be submitted to the governing body for approval.
Second.
All right, we have an amendment, a Shaner amendment to, uh, change the last paragraph of paragraph two. It was moved by Dr. Rinni.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
And I believe, who was the second on that?
Mr. Johnson, Councilman Johnson.
Dr. Rinni.
Mr. Mayor, I, I mean, I think the point is obvious. I, I do have some reservations. I have a lot of questions. Um, however, in talking to Mr. Steenburgh, and he said, look, Mark, we just want to keep the process going forward. Um, we would like some, you know, we would like to, you know, answer all your questions, cross the Ts, dot the Is. Um, so I want to give them time to do that, or give you and them time to do that. But I also want anything final that comes out of there to come through this body for final approval. So that's the rationale for my amendment.
It would come regardless, so thank you. How about the audience? Anyone want to speak to this, Mr. Steenburgh and Mr. Nash? Do you guys have comments on the amendment?
You did an excellent job of channeling Mr. Shaner, even his law.
Amen. All right, how about back, back to the governing bodies? Anyone in the governing body like to speak to the amendment?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, we'll start with Mr. Leiborne.
Well, obviously, after hearing this, this presentation, and I want to note that I have had a phone call with Mr. Robitaille. I've had a phone call with the CEO of the Chamber, attended the meetings. And this is such a complex and unusual situation. I think it really calls for a much stronger analysis than we're getting tonight. It is especially concerning to me that what we're talking about is involving ourselves in a financial benefit of a company, as I understand it, that is out testing soil around Wyoming and finding ways to benefit the carbon capture of that material that's growing on the surface. And that really isn't something we know much about. In fact, I don't think we know anything about it. And I don't think we ever involve ourselves in anything of this nature. And I'd point out that, yes, we do authorize and license all sorts of businesses in our community. But we don't expect anything back, not 2%, not 1%, not any percent for issuing that license. And in this case, I think that what we're talking about here is a very serious and revolutionary, and as it's pointed out in the title, we want to become the climate wellness capital of the world. Now, that's a colossal ambition. And I think that when you have a colossal ambition, you have a responsibility to spell it out in a more clear cut manner than we've gotten tonight. In particular, in regard to the issues that the councilman from Ward Two brought up from their own PowerPoint presentation. So I think this amendment is in order, and I believe that it will give us the opportunity to continue the dialogue and really come to understand this process a lot better than we're doing tonight. So I truly hope we pass it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Escobar.
Yeah, thank you through you and speaking on and for the amendment. And I do support it in principle and concept. Uh, the amendment allows me to further support it. The only reservation I had was that it was a little outside the norm or the way that we do business, circumventing the RFP process, but the amendment addresses that, makes me more comfortable moving forward with it. Uh, I do believe that it's the wave of the future in that the city of Cheyenne is probably one of the few cities that actually owns a ranch that could probably benefit more from it eventually in, in the long run. So going forward, I know we, as a governing body, have a lot more to learn on this issue and looking forward to doing that. Thank you.
Anyone else in the governing body? I run the amendment that Dr. Rinni read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, the amendment is passed. We're back on the main motion. Comments from members of the governing body?
Yes, sir, when you're ready. I'm ready, sir. Um, so I guess when it comes down to owning a ranch, last week I had Public Works actually send us the Army Corps of Engineers soil sample. So that's already being done. So I provided you that data last week via Public Works. Uh, pretty much on this one, I don't need to know the science behind it since we didn't have our meeting last night. I listened to two hours of a podcast called Whiskey is for Drinking and Waters for Fighting, which is actually orchestrated by the members who've made this proposition. So I don't need to know about the background science because I listened to it for two hours last night. But basically, I stand still on the part, I don't like that the resolution strictly has the mayor and the city clerk as the only signees on this, and not any members of the organizations, as there are many, not only Carbon Asset Network, but also the nonprofit that they represent. And so there's just so many different entities involved in this entire process. And from listening to their podcast last night, this actually encompasses several states, Wyoming, Texas, as well as Oklahoma and California. So it doesn't, you know, I get it, it's presented as a local type of agreement, but just listening to their podcast, there was many facets of individuals that were involved in this process. I would prefer not to do anything like this, even though I voted yes on the amendment, I'm no on the entire resolution, strictly on the fact that I wanted to go through the RFP process. I want to have all my i's dotted and t's crossed to make sure that the agreements are actually signed by all parties at the table. So I just think that this is a bad course of action, and that's why I'm voting no on the entire resolution.
Anyone else in the governing body like to speak?
Mr. Mayor.
President White.
Um, I started off tonight with a lot of doubts and serious questions. This is kind of a leap of faith by the governing body. Um, however, the amendment makes me much more comfortable in supporting this resolution, which I will do. And to my colleague from Ward Three, I understand your concerns and even share some of them. However, this is only a resolution at this stage. And the amendment clearly articulates the fact that any MOUs, contracts, anything going forward will come to the governing body for approval. So we will get our say in that. And, um, you know, I applaud Dr. Rinni for the amendment, and I'll support the resolution because of it.
Anyone else? All right, we're on the main motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wait, she got it. Hold on.
Well, I'm happy that you did. Forget what I just said. Dr. Aldridge. Well, I'm happy that you did. Forget what I just said. Dr. Aldridge. Michelle, are you unmuted?
Through you to the governing body, I just wanted to say that I also, this is so far outside of our area of expertise that I felt very uncomfortable doing, voting in favor of this the way that it was initially presented without the amendment. I think that the amendment allows us time to be able to do our due diligence and that it will come back before the council. And so for that reason, I will support the amendment and the resolution tonight so that we can explore this further, but definitely outside the box of my skill set and my expertise, but definitely willing to learn and see how we might be able to enhance our soil climate. And I think this goes hand in hand along with the water conservation and zero escaping efforts that we're doing. I think that as we're looking at how to improve our environmental health, that this might be one of those aspects that we might be able to pursue. And so for that reason, I'll be voting in favor of the resolution tonight as so that we can explore this further.
Dr. Aldridge, I appreciate your coming from the beach to join us tonight. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else in the governing body? All right, we're back on that main motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Mr. Johnson and Mr. Cook are knows. Yeah, resolution is adopted as amended.
Next item is number 23, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute settlement participation forms for the city of Cheyenne to participate as provided in the settlement agreements designated as the Johnson Settlement and distributor settlement dated July 21st, 2021.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this? Hearing Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, this item was reviewed under, under other items for, for the agenda at the December 20th, 2021 Finance Committee meeting. Therefore, provisions entitled to the city code have been met. And Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Comments from members of the governing body? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The settlement agreement is approved.
Resolution authorizing Oaks Law Firm PC to enter into 1YO opioid settlement memorandum of agreement, a distribution plan to resolve the city of Cheyenne's claims in a lawsuit regarding Venetian opioid epidemic.
All right, again to the audience, has anyone like to speak to this? Hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, this item was reviewed under other items for the agenda and the December 20th, 2021 Finance Committee meeting. Therefore, provisions of Title II of the city code have been met. And Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Labor.
What sort of a figure are we talking about here in regard to this settlement memorandum? Does it have a amount associated with it?
We have our, our city attorney here. I think she can answer that question for us, I hope.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I have it right here.
Oh, do you?
So total out to be received by the city is 415,740 dollars total, or $23,096.96 a year for 18 years.
Did you get that, Mr. Royble?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I understand. So probably this will go to the general fund. Is that correct?
Actually, I don't believe that that's correct, Madam Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, through you, Councilman Labor, Stephanie Boster, Cheyenne City Attorney. Actually, this has to qualify under, I think it's Exhibit A, which requires a qualifying plan. And we're looking for one of those within the city where we can distribute this money that may be through youth alternatives. It could be through Cheyenne PD, but it won't go into the general fund. It has to be earmarked to specifically help abate opioid addiction.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like, or not the audience on the governing body like to speak on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This resolution is adopted.
Next item is 26B on page five, agreement between the city of Cheyenne and the Cheyenne Animal Shelter for animal shelter services for fiscal year 2022.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this?
Well, members of the council, my name is Brittany Tennant. I'm the CEO of the Cheyenne Animal Shelter. And I came tonight, A, to introduce myself to some of you because I don't know that much since I've taken over in this capacity, and B, to be able to answer or attempt to answer any questions that you might have on the most recent version of the contract that you have before you tonight.
Very welcome. Thanks for taking on this job. Does anyone in the, the governing body have any questions for the director of our animal shelter? Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Hearing none, Mr. Royble. We have a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, this item was reviewed under other items for the agenda on the December 20th, 2021 Finance Committee meeting. Therefore, provisions of Title II of the city code have been met. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve an amount not to exceed $528,000 for sheltering services and $20,000 for miscellaneous animal patrol equipped, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cook. Comments from members of this governing body?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cook.
Through you, yeah. Obviously, as, as many of you know, this is, this, this has been a long year as far as negotiating this, this contract and this, this agreement has been concerned. I, I really just want to commend you and your staff, Mr. Mayor specifically, since we've taken over animal control, Mr. Fouton and his, his folks, as well as, as Brittany and the board. I am the, the outgoing liaison on the, the animal shelter board for the council, and I can say a lot of passionate people have been involved in this, and a lot of hard work has been done, as, as you are aware, Mayor, having done a lot of it yourself. I'm just very, very happy that we are to this point. Also acknowledging that a lot of work still needs to be done. And a lot of discussion still needs to move forward. But I am, am very impressed frankly with with Brittany's leadership to this point, just in the, in the short amount of time. And a lot of the ideas that she's expressed, a lot of the things that she is already trying to, to put in place, and I'm very supportive of that effort. And I would encourage you all, if you do have some questions about what she has planned, what she wants to do. She, she's broken, she's broken her her things out into, you know, 30, 60, 90 months, you know, type, excuse me, 30, 30 days, 60 day, 90 day type type steps that she's trying to accomplish things in, and, and she's working really hard with it. And the board seems to be behind her. So I'm very, very much supportive of this contract and trying to bring some kind of resolution to this finally. And looking toward our future partnership with the, the animal shelter. And I hope my colleagues will, will support this effort, see me.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The agreement is approved, and I will say, happy we're, have a 50-year agreement or a partnership, and we're going to be able to continue that. Thank you very much.
Next item is 27B on page six. Amendment number two to contract number 2511, amending and restating the city of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming Industrial Economic Development Joint Powers Board Agreement.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this agreement? Hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by President White. Comments from members of the governing body? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Mr. Johnson is a no. The contract amendment is approved.
Number 28B, consideration of bid number E dash 6 dash 22 for furnishing one new 2021, 2022 65-foot aerial device XT60 for rear mount aerial device or approved equal for the city of Cheyenne Community Recreation and Events Department Forestry Division.
All right, anyone in the audience like to speak to this bid? Hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to accept the bid from Floyd's Truck Center, Cheyenne, Wyoming, in an amount not to exceed 167,295 dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Comments from members of the governing body? Mr. Labor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Labor.
I have some questions for Jason Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez, if you would, please. Go ahead, Mr. Labor.
So, Mr. Sanchez, is this a replacement for an existing 65-foot device?
Mr. Mayor, Jason Sanchez, community, can you hear me?
Maybe you tilted up just a little bit.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right, Jason Sanchez, Community Recreation and Events Department. Through you to Mr. Labor, and that is correct. It is a replacement truck. The truck we're trading in is a 1998. It has exceeded its life. And it's been down for multiple repairs. I think we've spent a little over 20,000 in that truck in repairs up to 2019. It's just exceeded its life and is no longer safe to operate.
And so, Mr. Sanchez is what about the truck for the forestry department to use downtown? What's the status of that purchase?
Mr. Mayor, through you, we have received that truck last year, and it is in use.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Any other questions or comments for members of the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The bid is approved.
Next item is number 29A on page seven, voucher report.
All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the vouchers? How about from the governing body? Next item, please.
Revenue report.
Anyone in the audience like to speak to the revenue report? Governing body?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
Sorry, I was gonna send an email on this, but I got preoccupied. On the Granite Peak development payment for rail spur loan through the Wyoming Business Council, what does that entail?
Madam Treasure.
Mr. Mayor, through you to Councilman Johnson. That is for the loan that we, we signed, we guaranteed through the Wyoming Business Council for the rail spur in Granite, in Swan Ranch. And we get payments every month from Granite Peak to, to pay the loan. So it, the city doesn't pay anything. We're just a pass-through.
Thank you.
Did that answer, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I just, that one was unfamiliar to me.
Understood. Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the governing body on the revenue report? All right, next item, please.
Appointments of Ryan Gertz to the Contractor Licensing Board, Boyd Wiggum to the Planning Commission, Joshua Morris to the Building Code Board of Appeals, Linda Burke to the Board of Adjustment, Lori Brand to the Mayor's Council for People with Disabilities, and Stephen Gannison, Wendy Soto, Erin LeBlanc, Patrice Gepin, J.C. Manolo, Joseph Bainbridge, Joshua Philbrandt, Scott Granger, and Tate Smith to the Housing and Community Development Advisory Council.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
You have to do mayor appointments first.
Mayors don't vote on their appointments. Sorry about that. Lessons to break a tie. Dr. Aldridge?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Through you, I just wanted to say that I looked at this list of applicants to fill the positions on the boards and advisory councils that we have. And I am continually amazed at the caliber of individuals who are already doing a lot in our community that have continued to step up and engage in this manner. And it just really appreciate their expertise and their willingness to serve on all of these boards and advisory councils so that we can make the best decisions for our community together.
Thank you, Dr. Aldridge. I think we all agree with that. And we entertain a motion.
Second.
Mr. Royble, seconded by President White. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The appointments are approved.
Next item is 29B on page eight, reapportments of Scott Homer to the Fire Civil Service Commission, Alberta Coats to the Police Civil Service Commission, Don Harold, Millward Simpson, Josh Chrysler, and Gary Sims to the Historic Preservation Board, Brian Casey to the Contractor Licensing Board, Linda Burr and Lee Filer to Personnel Commission, Jeremy Arnison to the Planning Commission, Randy Byers and Jesse Naaman to the Building Code Board of Appeals, Sweet Nelson to the Board of Adjustment, and Charity Henning to the Mayor's Council for People with Disabilities.
Thank you. Again, I guess the mayor doesn't vote on his own appointments with the exception of breaking a tie. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Seagrave. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The reapportments are approved.
Announcement that due to the New Year's holiday schedule, regularly scheduled city council committee meetings will instead be held as follows. Finance Committee will meet at noon on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, and Public Services Committee will meet at noon on Wednesday, January 5th, 2022, at the Quanis Community House at 4603 Lyons Park Drive, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting. Announcement that due to a scheduling conflict, the regularly scheduled, scheduled city council meeting on Monday, January 10th, 2022 will instead be held at the Cheyenne Civic Center at 6:00 PM at 510 West 20th Street, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting. Other business.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak under other business? Michael, anyone online? All right, how about from the governing body? Mr. Johnson?
Two things, and they both happen this Thursday, December 30th. Crimson Sky Tattoo, in the spirit of giving, is doing 100 and, 100 to 150 dollar tattoos. All proceeds go to benefit the Camea Shelter. They are also going to post on their Facebook page certain items that the kitchen needs at the Camea Shelter. So if you do not want a tattoo, you can still give to that organization at Crimson Sky. They are going to stay open later until everybody gets a chance to get their tattoo done to benefit the Camea Shelter. And then, starting at 3:00 PM at Black Tooth Brewery, it is rooted in Cheyenne's turn for the pints for the community. So a dollar from every pint goes to rooted in Cheyenne. So I encourage you to please take part in both events if you're free on Thursday.
Thank you. That could happen, Dr. Rennie. Anyone else on the governing body like to speak under other business? All right, hearing none. I wish everybody a happy new year, a safe new year, and we are adjourned.